You can pay the big bucks, man.
Hey.
I saw it, I saw it.
Oh, I got thirty seconds. This clock's on my watch.
No, your watch is slow.
My watch is slow, sorry.
The iPad says seven oh one.
Right, exactly.
I can be smarter like him on my own.
Good? It's been recording for at least two minutes. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Camden.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman The Havens.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Mayor Jet.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation. April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen is Arbor Day. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas in nineteen, uh, eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Arri- Architecture,
Stop that.
That special, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one, than more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can be re- can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable, a renewable sort, resource, uh, enhance property values and economic vitality, vitality of business areas, beauty of our commu- beautify our community, and our source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Wayne Jet, City of McHenry, and McHenry City Council do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen is Arbor Day. You guys all make me nervous around here. It's no deal. All right. First item on the agenda, uh, is public comment. Is there anyone here in the public that'd like to make a public comment at this time? No? Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, looking for, uh, discussion on items, consent items, uh, six A through six F. Anyone have any discussion on those items? Pull any items or separate considerations? Simple question? All right, well, I'm, at this time, I'm looking for a motion by council to approve items six A through six F. Alderman Santee.
I will make the motion to approve the consent on the items six A through, uh, excuse me, six A through F. As presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Camden? Any discussion on these items? Alderman Santee?
Yeah, on six B, I just wanted to, just clarification, I know it came in a little bit high, well, it came in higher by about twenty-five percent or a little bit more, but just a, a question. It was like at one-seventy, I think we had the estimate, and now we came in at two-sixteen? Any explanation, you know, why it just came in that much higher?
So, so the budget number that we had proposed was a hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty.
Tonight's budgets before you have the updated number in it, two-sixteen. So I talked to a local trucker, and I based my estimate off of that number. Obviously, the estimate was lower than the actual bid. It's in the project, it's easier to give a budget number after you've moved it.
Yeah, well, but it's, and it's, nothing to do actually with the direction, it's just moving it out, right? It's the trucking portion that was the estimate that was just under regards to the amount of trucks or how much time it's gonna take to move it?
Right, so, the local, we talked to the local trucking companies, um, you know, they didn't bet on this project because they didn't wanna tie up their trucks to this, so this is through a broker. Finds work for truckers.
Sure.
Um, so I'm sure the cost is higher because of that. And, you know, just for another note, we looked at this, or we thought about providing the trucking ourselves with city staff, and, um, it's about the same cost for that, and then we would lose our patching, as we discussed in the Public Works Committee, you know, Public Works is gonna focus on street patching, uh, this pad, this construction season. And I don't wanna take away from that.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the fact that you could all support it tonight, and the consent agenda. I still have some reservations of, uh, how long before that section of the creek, actually the whole creek lagoon, uh, fills in, uh, considering the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being spent there just by us besides the Fox Waterway Agency, and, um, yeah, and I hope that, uh, in the near future, we start looking at the rest of the Blue Creek Shed, and, uh, hopefully maybe we can curtail what happens to the sections that we're directing, uh, so that it doesn't, in a short period of time, fill it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Camden.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman The Havens.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion to approve an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of an economic incentive agreement between the City of McHenry and, uh, RR McHenry LLC. Mr. Martin, may you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. In October of twenty sixteen, the City Council approved the development and economic incentive agreement with Blue Stone Single Tenant Properties LLC to offset extraordinary development expenses for the development of a projected fifteen million dollar fueling center and retail development, including the extension of the city's water main approximately one-half mile from the property generally located at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Road in Illinois Route one-twenty. Excuse me. That agreement has expired. The original agreement included a total of three liquor licenses for the overall project, one package license for the fueling station, uh, convenience store, and two for the detached retail space. The original agreement has expired, and a new fueling, uh, station user, uh, Thornton's instead of Ricky Rocket's is now proposed for the site. A new agreement was presented to the City Council on March eighteenth of this year for the development, excuse me, with similar terms as a previous agreement. The council had concerns about the two liquor licenses being issued for the Ansoa Retail Building to the west of the fueling center. Since the March eighteenth meeting, Mayor Jet has spoken with Rick Heiner, developer for the project. Mr. Heiner agreed to forego the two liquor licenses for the building that were originally in the incentive agreement. Thus, they have been removed from the agreement. Therefore, the only, the only liquor license which will be issued subject to all conditions being met is a package license for the Thornton's C Store or Convenience Store. And, uh, Drew Zazowski with Thornton's in the audience, if you have any questions.
Does anyone, uh, any, thank you, Doug. Is there, uh, any council members have any questions for Andrew from Thornton's? All right. Any, uh, discussion on this item? Alderman Glad?
Just questions, sir. On the incentives though, the, uh, just for clarification, that incentive goes to the developer, correct, not to Thornton's, correct?
The incentive is with RR, RR McHenry, so it is with the developer?
Correct, okay. Just for clarification, thank you. That's how I understood it, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Yep, yep. Any other questions? Comments? At this time, I'll go up to the public. Is there any public comment or input on this item? Uh, before I ask for a motion, I just wanna thank Rick Heiner for taking the call and getting this thing figured out. You know, obviously, um, he'd rather have the two liquor licenses, but I appreciate him, uh, looking at the concerns of the council and the staff here of the two liquor licenses, so, uh, so thank you to Rick Heiner and Thornton's for looking into building McHenry, so I appreciate that. Uh, at this time, I'm looking for a motion for seven A as presented. Alderman Santee?
I will make the motion, uh, with the attached ordinance authorizing mayor execution for the developments and economic incentive, incentive agreement between the City of McHenry and RR McHenry LLC as presented.
Seconded by Alderman Schaefer?
Seconded.
Uh, discussion on this item? See none? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman The Havens.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman McCand.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is seven B, is a discussion to accept the, uh, the surrender of a Class A liquor license from the McHenry Country Club and grant the issuance of a Class A liquor license to Food For Thought, McHenry Country Club LLC, DVA Metalwood Grill, pending approval of its application. Uh, Derek, would you like to present this item?
Sure. Yes, this was, uh, an item, as councils, uh, where that was, uh, it was added, uh, on Friday. This is, uh, the mayor has spoken with this organization, we've spoken with this organization's. Food For Thought is a, actually does catering and does this type of business in places, not only all over Chicagoland, but all over the, uh, country. Uh, they have taken over the, uh, operations at, uh, at, at the McHenry Country Club, uh, doing businesses Metalwood Grill, and, uh, and, uh, again, pending approval tonight, we'll continue the service out there at the Country Club.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Any, uh, comments, questions on this item? See none, I'm opening it up to the public. Is there any public input or comments regarding this item? I see none, I'm looking for a motion to approve seven B as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Seconded, Alderman Camden?
Seconded.
Uh, discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman McCand.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman The Havens.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes, sorry, excuse me, yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the ag- thank you, sir. Uh, the next item on the end, uh, on the agenda is seven C, uh, discussion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter nine of the City of McHenry Code to prohibit sweepstakes machines. David, you wanna go ahead and kinda?
Yeah, kind of along with Doug or Derek or whoever, but this was, uh, brought up mid-last week, so it was put together pretty quickly. We actually, uh, took a version of this from another city that the staff found, and I just kinda weaved it into our section here to fit. We added a section, we, we improved the definitions with what we needed to improve, and then we added section eleven, which is the, the one regulating these type of devices. We added, uh, twelve to protect video gaming usage, and then we added thirteen to increase the fines from the generic fine, minimum of twenty-five dollars per offense. So, the, the amendments are relatively simple, if the concept is there for the City Council to accept.
Do you want anything to add, Chief? Anything to add?
Just a real one. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Schaefer?
Just, uh, any specific examples of the types of devices you're, that this is really referencing? Like the sweepstakes machines? Is that any video gaming machine, or what is, what is, what's the sweepstakes machine?
It's considered, but, you know, no, you know, you.
Uh, I, I, someone, somebody. It's basically, it's a, it's a similar version of an electronic video gaming poker machine, that operates in a gray area of the law currently right now in the state statute. The Illinois Gaming Commission deems them illegal, uh, but they have yet to find a state attorney willing to prosecute or take criminal action. Uh, we have had one machine that popped up in McHenry, um, that we did conduct an investigation on, and it's currently open because we have not received type of approval for its use, and since then, that gaming machine has been, uh, removed from that location, specifically the Riverside Shop, uh, whatever it may be called, I'm not sure. But then, uh, Ross had received some, some further information from the company that distributes these. They're, they're pushing them, and they've been pushed to other counties and the collar counties in the Chicagoland area. And the only way that municipalities have had any success in trying to regulate or control them in their communities is by establishing an ordinance, so that was the route we went. The company that is pushing them said that if you had an ordinance against it, we will, basically, we won't, we won't push the use of them in your community, uh, but if you don't, we have every right to.
So, and if you look at the definitions, we added the definition for electronic sweepstakes machinery device, and that's different than the mechanical amusement device, which is what was in the ordinance, so we, we left in place what was regulated before known as mechanical amusement devices. We didn't try and modify anything we're otherwise regulating, we just identified the sweepstakes machines, not a physical sweepstake like a jewel that's, that's not regulated, and we excluded gaming, video gaming as we know it. So, it's a very small category of definitions and machines that we're trying to prohibit.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna ask it to everybody. Do we know where these machines are manufactured, and are they manufactured by other gaming companies that do business in town, you know, through the different bars and restaurants?
I don't get it.
And if no one has it, no, no problem, okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council? Comments? Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment or statement on this item? See none? At this time, I'm looking for a motion for seven C as presented. Alderman Curry?
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Santee. I'll, I'll second the motion. All right, last discussion on this item?
I just, just, one, one question, just. So we had in here before a definition of sweepstakes, but this, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, obviously, but that wasn't good enough before. Didn't we have that in the ordinance before, or am I misunderstanding that?
So, I was, so Dave, maybe you can answer, but the difference is, you're right, it's, it still is a definition here, but from how I understand it, uh, the electronic sweepstakes, so we're incorporating an actual electronic machine that is very similar.
Sweepstakes were invented before, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're just adding to it, iron, iron, iron plateing it, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman McCand.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman The Havens.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is eight A, this is a discussion regarding the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, proposed budget. Uh, Minister Fordfield, can you go ahead and, uh, start it off?
Certainly. I, I know we wanna jump into our personnel discussion, but I thought it was worthwhile to go through a process, uh, at least for the council who may have forgotten, uh, and certainly the public on where we're at with the budget process, so just, uh, if you bear with me just a few minutes, I'll go through, uh, some information, just the way the groundwork, and this is, as council will know and those of you that have seen the finance and personnel packets, this is a, a much more condensed version of anything in those packets. Uh, those have all the detail, and certainly, uh, less detail than was, uh, discussed at our finance and personnel meetings that we had, but, uh, at least for a summary. So this is the process to date, uh, for our budget. Obviously, it starts before this, uh, back in December and January, when the directors, uh, start and, and, uh, other personnel start to develop the budgets. But the first information goes to council, uh, at least this year, uh, in February, where the draft operating funds were transmitted to the Finance and Personnel Committee and the City Council in preparation for a Finance and Personnel Meeting on March eleventh, which was held. That's the next item down. Uh, so the, the committee reviewed the operating fund budgets along with the water sewer fund and the McHenry Recreation Center fund. What we then do as staff is we take any input from that meeting, in addition to any changes or mistakes or whatever that we find is part of the process, and we put together, uh, an updated packet of information for the, uh, operating funds, along with, uh, all of the other funds that comprise the city budget. There's some forty-plus funds that make up the overall city budget. Some of those are funded through the general fund, so we make the decisions on the operating funds, the general fund, uh, or get direction, and then we can fill in the rest of the funds based on that. Some of them are truly separate, but it just works out better that way to have that discussion. On March twenty-fifth, then, the Finance and Personnel Committee, uh, held a second meeting, uh, to take a look at all the funds, including any revisions to the operating funds that we, uh, that we discussed or they discussed and directed us to. Um, at that time, the committee requested an additional meeting on April first, uh, to, for further consideration of some personnel, four personnel, uh, request positions that staff made as part of the budget. So again, the committee met on April first, uh, to discuss the personnel requests, totaling three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and approved forwarding the budget as proposed, with the exception of the personnel requests, the full council for discussion and direction as it relates to the personnel requests on whether or not to include them at tonight's, uh, meeting. Last, uh, Monday, actually last Tuesday, the full draft of the budget was transmitted to council in preparation for tonight's meeting. Uh, as identified in the memo, there, there are sections of it that were left out or had to be left out until a decision's made about the positions, because, uh, things like, um, you know, the, the, because that affects all the numbers in that general fund budget, so we can't, couldn't complete those sections and like the table of contents and some others until we, uh, have a decision on that. So after tonight, based on discussion and direction by the council, uh, we will, as staff, finalize the budget, we'll fill in those missing sections, we'll transmit it to council for, uh, consideration and adoption as part of the April twenty-ninth annual meeting as we do every year. So that's kind of a summary of the process to date. I just wanted to hit on, I know we talk a lot about numbers, and we have, certainly have, as part of the finance and personnel process, but included in the budget document itself in the narrative are each department puts together its accomplishments and goals and objectives, accomplishments from the current year that we're in, and goals and objectives for the following year. And so, this is just a small, small amount of all the accomplishments that were included by directors as part of that discussion, uh, but I just wanted to at least list some of them. I'm not gonna go through all of them, uh, but there's some pretty significant accomplishments as you start taking a look through this. Again, not just things that we completed as staff, but we can only do some of these things with the acknowledgement and direction and approval of city council, either directly through, uh, these meetings or, or indirectly through the approval of the budget each year. But things like the reduction of the impact fees by fifty percent obviously had an immediate impact and continues to have an impact on the community. Uh, if we look at things like the dispatch facility and the police department, the number of calls that the dispatch facility handles each year, it's always astounding to see, you know, the thirty-eight thousand emergency and ninety-one thousand non-emergency calls that are handled through NERCOM. Um, they're also, we also had a full-scale training drill, uh, with various agencies at his campus, uh, that it goes south and central wastewater treatment plant consolidation, uh, has finally came to fruition, and we finalized that process. Uh, the number of projects that Public Works deals with, and now that we've made the change over the last couple of years to, uh, with our engineering, the amount of projects that John and Troy and the staff of Public Works handle, um, you know, again, the number of, uh, of, uh, of events that, that all departments really participate in throughout the year. I hit on the, hit on the big ones, but as we know, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of events that we participate, uh, directly and indirectly and throughout the year. Again, just, just throughout a bunch, and I, I'm not gonna go through every single one of these, but I thought it was important just to remind ourselves what some of the major accomplishments were or are, and please take a look through the budgets if you didn't have a chance to, and take a look at all the accomplishments that the directors put forth, uh, for, for both their individual departments and the city overall. So I thought that was important. Uh, moving into the numbers, general fund revenues. Uh, this is the way we, we tackled at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, and so I thought it was worth a review here, just to, uh, remind us of where we're at or where we're anticipated to be at the end of this fiscal year, which ends, uh, ends at the end of this month, end of April. The city's fiscal year goes May first, April thirtieth of each year. So what we do is we take ten months' worth of actual expenditures and project out through the remainder of the fiscal year, although this varies by source. We receive some revenues at the beginning of the fiscal year upfront. We receive some after the close of the fiscal year, so it's not always as easy as saying, well, you know, we get ten dollars a month for the last ten months, we can project out two more months, uh, because we may have received all those funds in the first two months of the year, so obviously, we're not gonna get any more, uh, through the rest of the year, so it's not always, uh, but that's, this is as best as we can, uh, project or anticipate those revenues. Uh, in general, total revenues are estimated at about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars higher than the amount that was budgeted, uh, for the year, and, uh, and about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars higher than the actual amount of revenues that, that, uh, that we received through in the last fiscal year, the seventeen-eighteen fiscal year. It's always interesting to take a look, I always call them the big three, property tax, sales tax, and state income tax, uh, make, make up about seventeen million dollars of all of the general fund revenues that we take in. That's about seventy-five point six percent of all general fund revenues, uh, and those go to fund all of our non-water sewers, so police, um, public work streets, admin, uh, community development, all, basically all city services except water and sewer, which are funded through, uh, customer, uh, payments for those services, and specific to the recreation center, the memberships and services that are provided through the recreation center. Uh, property tax is estimated at just, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars higher than budget, which isn't very much. State sales tax is estimated at about a hundred and nine thousand dollars higher than the amount budgeted. Local sales tax, about forty-six thousand higher. State income tax, twenty thousand higher, for a net of about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, more revenues than the amount that we actually budgeted for the year, so it's always, always better to be higher, uh, than anticipated than, than to under-budget and not be, not be on for that. Of the remaining twenty-four percent of the budget, uh, the most significant variance from the amount budgeted or, uh, amount budgeted is related to video gaming revenues, which are estimated at about a hundred and sixty-two-six, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars higher than the amount budgeted. That's been a revenue source that has increased every year, uh, since, uh, since video gaming came to McHenry, and, uh, it comprises, just in case you're wondering, about six hundred thousand dollars of the city's budget, so, uh, people have varying opinions on video gaming, um, but, uh, even despite that fact, it's, it's a ma- it's a relatively major revenue source at over a half million dollars a year for, for the City of McHenry, and then reimbursements at about eighty-three thousand dollars higher. So those are anticipated revenues. Just taking a look at the proposed revenues, the difference between what we think we're gonna get through the, uh, end of this year and the budgeted amount for this year compared to the amount that we're proposing for next year or estimating for next year. We're proposing, uh, just over two million dollars or nine point one percent higher than the amount that was budgeted in eighteen nineteen. Uh, the most significant increases include about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, dollars more in state sales tax receipts. Those are our normal state sales tax receipts that we get from the one percent, uh, of, of, of sales in the community. About eight hundred and fourteen thousand, uh, dollars more in local sales tax receipts, uh, primarily due to the, uh, quarter percent increase, so, uh, of that eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, about seven hundred and fifty thousand of that is estimated or proposed as a result of a quarter percent sales tax increase, so we would've had, uh, an increase anyway, um, but certainly not as much as, as the, uh, as the eight hundred and fourteen thousand. What, a hundred and thirty-three-six, uh, state income tax receipts, and a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, more in telecommunications tax receipts, obviously from the, uh, two percent increase in the telecommunications tax, so that's a significant increase. Uh, what, a hundred and thirty thousand more in video gaming receipts, and then five hundred, just over five hundred thousand miscellaneous, that includes, for example, the payment that we get from, uh, Meyer Material this year as part of the agreement and none other fines and, uh, other miscellaneous revenues, which make up that number. And again, I, I already identified, uh, in the next bullet there, that about nine hundred thousand, so if you take a look at this, if you take the seven hundred and fifty thousand from the local sales tax, the quarter percent. take a look at this, if you take the $750,000 from the local sales tax, the quarter percent increase, and $150,000 from the two percent increase in the telecommunications tax, that adds up to $900,000. And that's the amount of revenues proposed. That's a significant amount, obviously, of the two, just over $2 million. I mean, so $900,000 of that $2 million increase over last year is a result of the actions taken by council. And I just, I wanted to again identify the number, without these increases of the local sales tax and telecommunications tax, the revenues that we would be talking about for next year would be just over $1.1 million, so about 4.95 percent higher than the amount budgeted last year. So our revenues would have still gone up, but they're supplemented with the telecommunications and local sales tax receipts. And then I just wanted to make a note somewhere in here, just to remind us that the proposed budget also includes the removal of the municipal vehicle sticker program, which we saw about $145,000 in revenues, but also about $21.5 expenditures for the administration of that program. So before I move on to expenditures, just generally, any questions or comments from the committee or any questions from the council on any of the proposed or anticipated revenues in the general fund in the budget? All right, thank you. Onto expenditures. So this is the same, the same exercise as we did with the revenues. So these are anticipated expenditures through the end of the fiscal year or the end of this month. And this is a reminder, in the general fund, we're talking about all personnel, contractual supplies, internal fund transfers, capital improvement, capital equipment costs related to the functions of the city, I mentioned this earlier, except for the water sewer utility divisions of the Department of Public Works. Those three divisions are all funded through our water sewer rates that we pay for those services and the recreation center, which is run as an enterprise fund. So the revenues that are gained through memberships and programming and often through the recreation center go to pay for not only the operating costs of the recreation center, but also capital improvements related to the recreation center, like the parking lot that was done this last year, and also the debt service that we have on that facility. So no, no tax dollars goes towards the recreation center, operating capital or debt service costs. The total expenditures are estimated through the end of the year at about $97,000 lower than last year's budgeted amount. So again, it's always good, we can say that the expenditures are under the amount of the budget, the amount budgeted. We try hard to do that. And just as a breakdown, overall, personnel costs are anticipated lower by about $133,000, contractual costs lower by a few thousand, supplies lower by about forty. Capital outlay is the biggest one, lower by about $530,000, just due to, for example, the biggest project in there is the detention facility occurring in Ringwood and Route 120. We didn't get the grant for that, so obviously funds weren't spent. Some funds are being carried over to next year to still be able to do something with that project. But again, that's the reason why those funds or why those expenditures were lower for projects, one example. Through the amount proposed for next year, nineteen, twenty, the proposed operating without capital projects are based, again, based on the outcome of the personnel discussion tonight. I wanted to give you an example of both examples here. So with the positions included, the operating expenditures would be about $896,000 higher and without the positions would be about $532,000 higher. So the end of that story, I guess, is where the point here is that our operating costs are going to go up with or without the positions, whether it's $532,000 or $896,000, and that happens, obviously, each year. Personnel expenditures represent approximately seventy-six percent of all operating expenditures, which we know from looking at the budget and the cost for personnel. And again, I broke it down here without the proposed positions, those four positions. The nineteen, twenty increases are about $450,000, and that's broken down about $234,000 for contract increases. So increases that are already approved in contracts either through 150, which is Public Works and Parks Division employees, or Police FOP Unit Two, which is patrol or Unit Two, which is records and dispatch contracts. $106,000 for non-bargaining unit employees through CPIU and merit increases, and then about $63,000 for police pension increases. Just continuing in the contractual, those costs are proposed at about $111,000 higher in the budget. If you look through especially the memorandums in front of Finance and Personnel, part of what's being proposed as part of the budget is to be able to redirect staff from snowplowing. Right now, staff are pulled out of other departments and especially parks to assist with snowplowing in non-downtown or non-park areas like cul-de-sacs, and a significant amount of time is spent by them being able to do that. And we want to focus more on other snow removals throughout the community, specific downtown snow removal, making it more efficient and more thorough in the downtown areas. And by being able to contract some snow plowing services, we're able to deal with things like those cul-de-sacs, like some of the parking lots, which may be lower priority but still need to be done throughout the community. And that also includes contracting street sweeping services throughout the community. Supply costs are about $35,000 higher due to increases in commodity costs like gasoline. If you just look over the last month or six weeks, the costs have gone up fifty cents or so a gallon for gasoline. I know this up and down, but I think we've hit the downs, we have to start planning. Our numbers show that the costs, that the costs are going to be higher. And then transfers are proposed to actually decrease by about $252,000 due to the retirement of a GO refunding bond from 2013. So again, that's an overview of expenditures that are anticipated through the end of the year or proposed for nineteen, twenty. Any specific questions on any of those?
Yeah, when you mentioned, for example, back on, you said $896,000 higher with positions from thirty-one without positions. Is that budget to budget or is that anticipated to budget?
That's the budget to budget. All right, yeah, the budget to budget, yeah. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Um, just as a clarification with the, under the contractual cost with the snowplowing, I certainly can appreciate the downtown areas, but the subdivisions, if they can't get out of their subdivision, they can't get to downtown. So I'm assuming that that's as much of a priority as well.
Right, yes.
So it's just the cul-de-sacs that are going to be done contractually?
Yep. We're proposing to contract out the cul-de-sacs, dead ends, and parking huts. The larger routes or the larger dump trucks are still handling house.
Okay.
And we're looking to add another route on the large dump trucks too, with additional personnel. We'll see that we can cover that down quicker.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I'm sorry, nothing. So just the bottom line, a snapshot then for nineteen, twenty, what's always most important or at least extremely important to me, if not most important, is that we can present a balanced operating budget, and we're able to do that. So if you take a look at the two scenarios here, the one on top with the positions included, the one on the bottom without the positions, and I'll talk us through this quick. So the column on the left, actually in the middle, but on the left, that has the green numbers underneath of it, that is the proposed revenues and expenditures without the positions included, and just showing, you know, revenues over expenditures, where we would be at. The green number of 1.139369 shows that we're proposing that there'll be more revenues coming in for the year than expenditures going out, and that would be the difference between the two of those. And that's without capital. So again, there's 1.6 million dollars in capital projects included in the budget, but we always, again, look at the operating costs first and then look at the capital costs just to show the impact. So if you include the capital costs of 1.6 million, it increases obviously the expenditures by that amount. And the 483206 then would be the amount that we would have to take out of the general fund balance, borrow or use out of the general fund balance to be able to do all of the operating as proposed, plus the 1.6 million dollars in capital costs. So basically, if you add the 1.139369 and the 43206, the numbers in green and red, those two numbers equal the amount of the capital outlay projects that we have, the 1.622 million dollars. And the bottom numbers, then, it's the same comparison except with the positions included. So you look at revenues at twenty-four, just over twenty-four million, expenditures at 22556, I'm sorry, this is without positions included, if I can see that. Top is with, bottom's without. So without the positions, we end, we would be about $1.5 million to the good revenues over expenditures, and then when you include the capital, again, the same amount of 1.622 million, we'd have to use about 1.6, I'm sorry, $119,000 of general fund balance to be able to cover the capital cost, I'm sorry, the operating costs and the capital costs. And at the bottom, I just said again, I wanted to put the with capital column. I think it's important if you see that to show, you know, first of all, to show that operationally we're balanced if we chose not to do any capital, but because we have capital projects to do, that we can't always cover those with just the revenues, because sometimes we have to use general fund balance to be able to cover those. So just a quick one-page snapshot, but operationally we're balanced for the year. So as we start to go through the budget itself, again, last year I had page numbers that I could refer you to directly through these, but we break these off in chunks for any questions. The directors are all here regarding any of these. So these are all the, except for water sewer and the recreation center, these are all the operating departments of the municipality, and if you have any questions about any of these, please feel free to ask at this time, and we'll go through each chunk of, each chunk of budgets separately. Questions on any of these?
Questions?
We can always come back if you do. And this is similar to how we went through them with the Finance and Personnel also. So some questions were asked and answered during that time. We tried to include those then in the information. And then we have special revenue fund budgets, which are comprised of the following: tourism, badge advance, defense, alarm board, audit, annexation, MFT, developer donation, and tax increment finance. You'll note, again, in the tax increment finance budget, this is a known topic all around the lab, we used to have discussions about previous budgets because we would plan hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in tax increment finance projects, so we knew that we probably weren't going to spend hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars on tax increment finance projects. So now, the tax increment finance fund just reflects the amount of property tax increment that we take in, it shows the debt service that we have, and there are not tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars in projects that are included in that. And we discuss those as part of the CIP, we include them as we can, but they're not included as part of the tax increment finance. Any questions on any of these budgets? All right, capital projects, debt service fund budgets are comprised of the following: the debt service fund, the recreation center, special service area number four, capital improvements fund and the projects included there, and capital equipment. I just, I wanted to point out, and we did the same thing as part of the, as part of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, that, you know, how well we do with the recreation center. Again, that was a project going back a number of years that the council discussed on whether or not they wanted to do it or not, you know, made the commitment to build the facility across the way, and, you know, again, we had eight hundred members when the facility opened three years ago and have over 2,400 members now, I don't know what it is today, but around that amount now, and it's just been a truly a success in order to be able to pay for itself and providing a good, you know, Bill runs a good facility over there and his staff, and we just have some great programs and services that we offer, and it's really an asset to the community. So I give Bill and his staff kudos for running a great facility over there. Any questions on any of these budgets? Enterprise fund budgets. So the main one here that'll make sense is as it relates to water and sewer. I mentioned that water and sewer and as it relates to divisions, the utility divisions of Public Works are all funded through the, what we pay for our water and sewer, so when you get the bill every two months and you pay that, it goes to fund the operations of the water sewer and utility divisions, the employees that work there, the equipment there, the supplies that are needed to operate the facilities, the maintenance of those water wastewater facilities. Utility division's been around a couple of years now, and they focus primarily on fixing the pipes in the ground. Basically, they focus on doing water and sewer main enhancements, improvements, or fixes when there's an issue. So that's the best way to explain enterprise funds or like business funds. Any questions on any of these? Internal service fund budgets. So again, these, exactly like they sound, they fund internal issues that we have or internal items such as employee insurance, risk management, and information technology. So things that we rely on, the transfers out of the general fund, or the contributions that we make as employees to be able to fund these three funds. Any questions on any of these? And here's your refund budgets. Again, employee flexible spending, development ask for all retaining personnel, revolving loan, which we deal with occasionally when we're approached with a revolving loan fund request, and then police pension, which I touched on earlier. We have a commitment to get to a certain percentage of funding for the police pension fund by the year 2030, and so each year the amount that we contribute to that is identified by an actuary, which advises our police pension board, which then tells us the amount that's needed to be able to fund that, the police pension, to be able to get to the amount that's our target by 2030. Any questions on any of these?
What's the percentage that we're at right now as far as the police pension?
Fifty-two percent.
Fifty-two. And where do we need to be?
We have to be ninety, but they also moved that date back.
I'm sorry.
To, they just recently did it to 2040.
Twenty-fourty, yeah, okay. It's by 2030 or so long.
Twenty-fourty.
Twenty-fourty. And where were we, would say, two or three years ago? I mean, kind of been improving.
We've gone up from forty-eight to fifty-two.
In one year?
The last four years, I believe.
About one percent per year, so.
But the actuary figures out your amount to be funded by that date, so as long as we keep a hundred percent funding every year, we'll meet that requirement.
This year it's a sixty-two something. I know, I remember a couple of years ago, it was like $1.3 million that we had to fund to be able to match the amount, so I'm happy when I conceive a $62,000 amount and not a $1.3 million contribution. All right. Any other questions? So then brings us, again, that's an overview. I went through the general fund. You know, the details on all individual operating funds or other funds were reviewed in more detail by the Finance and Personnel Committee with recommendation made on those to council. No issues with those other than what was in the minutes or what we've made adjustments to already. As I identified at the beginning of the discussion, the outstanding item of impact is, relates to the four requested employees that were made by staff, and that, those are two sworn full-time police officers, one full-time Parks Division maintenance worker. All three of those positions are covered by bargaining unit, so either FOP or 150, and a one full-time human resources coordinator, which is a non-bargaining unit position. And as I already identified, the committee for the budget, as we've gone through the council with recommendation, except for whether or not to fund these four positions. Basically, by the end of the discussion tonight, staff needs consensus from council on whether or not to include funding for these positions in order to be able to finalize the budget, bring it back to council for consideration on April 29th. Again, there's no vote tonight, it's for discussion, consensus, direction, and that information will then be included in the budget and brought back to council at the annual meeting. And also, the directors are all here. And also, the directors are all here from all the departments, but specifically Chief Burke, Human Resources Director Campanella, and, and?
Director Hobson.
Director Hobson, yeah, I was looking, who's Bill at? Yeah, he always sits over here, Director Hobson, for the Parks Division Maintenance Worker. So, I am done with my review, thank you for your time. I know, it's a long time, but it's a lot of information.
No, I gotta say, great job, Derek, putting this all together, and all the directors for getting this information, and honestly, looking at those accomplishments, you know, we've done a lot of good things, so it's exciting for the next fiscal year, what we're gonna do, but at this time, opening up for discussion by council, any questions, comments, or anything, so. Alderman County?
Yeah, I also want to thank the finance committee, they've voted a lot of extra time over the last month, month and a half, with administrative Moorefield's guidance, and I do really appreciate the time that Chief Burke gave to me the last few days in regards to his discussion, and also appreciate Director Bill Hobson of Parks and Rec in regards to, you know, his extra time that he spent with me, either on the phone, or numerous conversations that we had over the last, over the last few days. Two things that just, that stick in my mind, and I'll leave it to the rest of the council members to discuss and listen to them, but January 21st, we voted for a quarter percent sales tax increase, and I think I passed 70, I think I passed 70 or so, or all, and I can just speak for myself, because I wasn't able to do some research I wanted to do, but I guess I can only speak of myself, but I did, in my comments at night, talk about capital and talk about things that I felt, you know, real needs to try to do for the city and make the city better, you know, as a whole, and that was, you know, my key thought, and to move forward, to put that expenditure, not necessarily on the community itself, but because sales tax does come from people outside the community also, because we do have a lot of visitors from time to time. And the second item I have is that, I, I'm not part of the finance committee, I read the agenda on the 11th, and I saw the number of four new staff members, and when I look at a budget, I really have some very high concerns about going after four new staff members in one budget year, and, you know, and especially after what I had spoke of and what I had voted on on January 25th, it's, in one year's time, I just look at it as just a large number to absorb and absorb in one city budget year, and I will, I get my two major points, and once again, I do appreciate all the time from the directors and everything in regards to more information, and I'll listen to it, I'm sure a lot of other council members will want to speak up on this. Thank you.
Alderman County?
Well, I know we've eliminated some positions as well, so I don't know what the final numbers would be. How many positions have we eliminated this year, do you know?
This year, two positions this year.
Two, so it'd be the equivalent of only adding two, I'm not saying that that's not significant, but just pointing that out. But, and I hate to be a broken record, but this is the third year in a row that I will throw it out there, that I think that we still need someone to be a social media coordinator, information specialist, I don't care what you call it. I think Doug Martin does a phenomenal job of putting information out there, and I think Patrick Pollidori, I don't know what, what officer, I don't know.
Sorry, Colvin Ferris.
Okay, I didn't want to incorrectly title him, but.
He appreciates that.
They both do a wonderful job, but, but I don't know if that is at least supposed to be Doug's job, I know Doug is out there all the time trying to, you know, bring business in and retain business, and I just think that we need one person, and I know the police department's a little bit different, so maybe that is separate, but I think we need someone to specialize in getting information out to the public, because let's face it, the newsletters, you know, we've cut back, that's not where people, younger generations get their information, they go online. And I have a pretty good idea that even though I will be leaving the council, that we have a social media expert that will be coming onto the council, and she probably will have a lot more to say about this, but again, I just think that that's something that should be considered, I know we've talked about it, and talked about it doing it contractually, talked about doing it part-time, I don't know what the answer is, but I guess I feel frustrated that I keep bringing this up, and everybody now says, yeah, that's important, but nothing has been proposed before us. So, that said, I have a question for Ann, if, do you think that that would be something, if we went ahead with this human resources coordinating, and not to say that I don't think that you are overworked, and that that wouldn't be very helpful for you, but possibly, because to me, that kind of falls within human resources, or could, would that be something that this is the assistant coordinator, or whatever the position has to be entitled, could also take on? And I'm throwing you for it, because you probably didn't consider it, but.
Actually, no, I have considered it, because just in general, I will agree with you that we need someone who is a specialist in media for the city, as the police do for their side.
Yeah.
However, there's not enough work, honestly, for a full-time position.
I agree.
To staff that. So, that being said, there are two completely different skill sets between an HR assistant or coordinator and social media, however, that also being said, there are some people in other positions within the city that do have much college education in communications and social media that might apply for the HR coordinator position.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, but, you know, I don't want to. So, it could be, because like I said, it's two separate skill sets, but if we designed it correctly, it would just be hard to find a person that is great and able. And I do agree, I don't think it's a full-time position, but I do think that that coordination is important, and would free up, because I don't think it's just within economic development, I think it's public works, I think it's from the mayor, from, you know, that we should have one place that the message is going forth.
Absolutely.
And that said, I mean, I recently found out, there's, that's even a college degree now, social media, so, I mean, it's a thing, I'm not making this up, you guys, I mean, I really believe that we need to be able to reach the public where they're at, and I don't think we're doing a great job, I think we're getting better all the time, absolutely. The mayor's been instrumental in that, and so has Doug Martin, and so has, I'm sorry, Pollidori. But, can we do better? We can't. So, that's my only, I just had to throw that out there again, you'll never hear from me again about it. There might be someone else, there might be someone to step up, I don't know, whatever.
Thank you, Derek. Any other questions, comments? Alderman County?
And one of the things that concerns me is, is you take a look at our total budget, you take a look at the operating expenses of personnel, and we're looking at 76%.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's without even adding on these additional positions, and it kind of makes me wonder how many of these would even be asked for if we didn't increase the sales tax revenue purchase. Full time? Personnel coordinator, I don't know, I tend to wonder if we start out with a part-time, possibly go into full-time as far as a position like that, but all the others, at this time, I'd say, you know, we've got extreme amount of things to catch up on as far as our day-to-day operation, as far as roads and utilities and everything else that need to be upgraded, and, you know, we take a look at, I think of when I first got on the council, and most of the officers were just happy if they could have some padding on their, new padding on their seats that they were sitting on all day, and we've come so far over the years as far as the fact that we now replace a vehicle probably within five to six years in most, on most cars. Chief?
We haven't bought any cars, this will be our third year in the world in buying cars since we have any capital wanted to buy.
And again, a lot depends on the condition of.
Only recum, you're not.
Expenses.
That's a different story. Which we'll talk next month, we have a recum, so.
Yeah, and I think, I know with discussions of other Alderman, I know one of the things too, is the fact that, you know, you take a look at some of these outlays of these projects, and it's a one-time deal as far as some of these projects that we do, needless to say, replacing squad cars, or Public Works, or Parks, or whatever, as far as vehicles and equipment, I mean, that's capital improvements, that's in that 24% range, and as we add on more personnel, we're also adding on more as far as our police pensions, or any pensions that are out there as far as we can access, which is costs that will continue every single year. And when do we get to point to where we can say that if the growing community, that we are able to maintain where we're at in the first place, and if we keep growing the margin as far as personnel, I think that really, really curtails us as far as catching up to a lot of the infrastructure that we need to do. You know, we talked about spending $200,000 on, as far as hauling out Bull Lagoon and certain sections, and yes, it may help us economically, but how many years is it for the return of that? Meanwhile, what is it that we're not doing out there in the neighborhoods as far as whether it be, you know, sidewalks that are crumbling, aprons that are crumbling, or whatever kind of infrastructure we need to do? And so, like I said, I also take a look, and I say, okay, these are estimates that we're looking at as far as increase of revenue, but we do have other entities out there that are increasing their retail, we don't know on the other side of the river, how much of that might be drawn to 12 and 120, that could curtail our sales tax to some amount, we don't know. And I'd really like to wait a year and see where this increase in the sales tax goes, plus with Woodman's being opened up down there at 12 and 120, needless to say, it will drag a lot of people over there at the beginning, have new facilities when they first open up, always do, and after a couple of months, then the idea of the new place that everyone's visited, and okay, I've seen it, but I like shopping where I normally shop, and they go back to where they usually are, but, you know, what are those impacts? So, I would want to tread very, very carefully on this, because that 76% could easily jump up to 80% if revenues go down. And like I said, as far as the human resource, I know this isn't the first year, I know we've been here for, for.
Three years.
Yeah, and, you know.
Next year will be four, if I don't get it wrong.
Maybe that's where we start, you know, again, cautiously, to where we get a part-time with possible full-time hours, you know. That's my thinking on some of this, and I find it very difficult to take it, and really endorse anything better than that at this point. And that doesn't mean that we couldn't look at these numbers next year, after we've had a full year of increases in the sales tax and everything else, but as far as directors are prepared to discuss justifications, I've seen justifications since 1997, and I've seen some very specific time put in to some of those proposals of directors convincing councils and Alderman that why they needed whatever they were asking for in the budget, and, you know, the whole thing is, is not saying that, you know, need that stuff, but the question is, is what can we afford, and where are our priorities, and where do we need to start looking at our biggest improvements? That's why I, kind of like I said, I kind of like to walk very slowly on this, so.
Alderman County?
The 364,000, that includes salary and benefits, correct?
Yes, for first year.
Correct.
Any other questions, Count? Alderman County?
I have a question for Director Hobson, since 2006, can you just explain more responsibly what has the Parks Department has taken on to.
Just since 2006, we've, you know, we created the whole downtown division all by itself, so that alone, three downtown districts that we've taken on, that's the biggest item. The second biggest item is obviously the recreation center, that was added in 2016, we are the frontline maintenance for that facility. In addition, in this year's budget, one of the things that we talked about was adding the contractual snow plowing to free up guys to do downtown snow removal in the winter, that's one thing that we've never done is sidewalks, we've done our best in spot cleaning sidewalks, cleaning Riverwalk, but to then take that on full-time would be something that would really be undertaking for us, we have a plan in place that we think will work, provided everything else goes well, but those are the major things. Obviously, the Parks projects that come up, the mowing, there was a large portion of mowing that was taken and moved to contractual, but as you can see in what was sent out, you know, there was a number of in-house projects that we were able to then accomplish, whether that's rebuilding gazebo, whether that's ball field maintenance, a number of things that we haven't had to do contractually, so to offset any work loss that we've had, I think we're still way behind in terms of what we gained, just specifically in the downtown maintenance and the Riverwalk that we've continued to add on to.
Alderman County?
Yeah, question, Director Lynch, could you tell me, we're looking at 76%, now, that does not include the contractuals, correct, that go into the operational, so really, as we keep doing more contractuals, then we're just kind of placing those percentages in another category, but that is labor costs that actually raises that 76% up to a larger percentage. You know, every time you do a contract, so that we can free up some of our other workers for another projects, it's still labor costs, even though we put it under different headings and different lines in the budget. So, actually, if we're looking at 76%, it'd be interesting where that percentage is with all the contracts that we have out there, mowing and snow plowing that we're talking about and everything else, so, you know, where does it end, you know, where do we wind up with? It aggravates me to think that every year, I'm always looking at, trying to get, to see how many streets we can get redone, and how much, how little money in a lot of cases that we have, and it was great, a couple of years ago, we found a little extra in the budget, thanks to our Director Moorefield, and all of a sudden, we moved it to capital improvements, and most of it to the street program, we had a great street program that year, and that's the type of program, maybe not quite as great as that, but maybe it needs to be that big for the next 10 or 15 years to catch up to everything. No, we're never going to have all our roads at an eight, and a nine, or a 10, but it's amazing how many that we have rated at threes and fours, and the only way we're going to get them up into that better classifications is to take and have bigger projects, I mean, maybe what we need to do is redo our budgets as far as how we deal with roads, maybe we need a road fund. as far as how we deal with roads. Maybe we need a road fund that it states that, you know, we added the city sales tax. Well, maybe that city sales tax, the gasoline debt portion, maybe should be going into a road fund so that every year we know that we have a million, million and a half dollars or whatever it is to do these projects. And, you know, I think of, I think Dartmoor is a very good example of the fact that it was in 1997 that we took and we opened up that bridge late in 97. And yet, the west side of that bridge, we've already replaced that road. And the east side, we haven't done anything with. And I don't know when the last time Dartmoor was done on the east side between Crystal Lake Road and... And that's one of our, probably one of our largest, I guess what you'd call it, minor arterial roads because it's not one of the major ones like Crystal Lake Road 120, but it does carry, as far as through subdivisions, probably the largest flow of traffic in the city. You know, and probably carries more traffic most of the times than the Green Street does. And we know how much traffic Green Street has. So, again, I just think, getting way off of base here, I think the main thing that we need to look at is we need to curtail what we're doing as far as moving slowly as far as adding on additional help. Yes, you can always use more help, but can we afford it? That's the question.
Alderman, kind of?
I agree with Alderman Lab in that, you know, our roads are always going to be a priority. And we're, we struggle every year with trying to find funds to adequately do the work that is, you know, some roads are literally critical. But I also know that, you know, we're in the business of helping service the community, and that requires people as well. So there's a really tough call between those capital improvements and the roads and our staff, which is, we've relied heavily upon, over the course of my tenure here, you know, we've cut back on capital improvements to the point where it was pretty scary. We've cut back on, time and time again, on, you know, staff. We consolidated positions. We would, when someone would retire, we would not fill a position. Their work would be absorbed into other duties of existing employees. And so, we've really struggled over the years. And I know that's, it's not, we're not unique in that effort from other communities around here. But again, I just want to remind everyone that we did eliminate two positions this year. So when you say we're adding four, it's, and it's not apples to oranges also, let me throw that out there, but we're really just adding an additional two employees. I don't know, I just, I think we need to invest in our personnel where we're going to get people that are burned out and leave. I guess I do have one question for Chief Burke, that if we could only get you one officer, could you live with that?
That's it.
Boy, did I put you on the spot. I'm sorry.
Yeah. You know, I think I'm approaching the critical point with staffing, so that's why I asked for it.
Yeah. I mean...
I'd like to leave it at that answer.
I'll accept that. I'm trying to get you something.
Appreciate it.
That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
To carry on a little bit with that too, I think, I want to say going back to maybe 2012, 2010, we had the, overall, headcount was reduced, I think, 21 people. Wasn't that the number? 21. I don't know, maybe you know, and where we're at versus that time, but I know the number percentage-wise has probably gone from 72% to 76%. If you look at the actual numbers, does that sound right?
In terms of, okay, so I wasn't here in 2010 as far as staffing?
So there's no information back then?
Well, no, I mean, I could definitely look it up, and I don't know, you know, but I don't have it at my fingertips. But I will say, as Councilmember Condon said, we have rearranged positions. When people have left, we've not filled them. When they've retired or have left, we've not filled them. We've moved in the community development downstairs. We are totally different in staffing. So we have tried so many different ways to put the right people in the right positions. So I will get you the numbers in terms of total staffing, how it was and where we are today. So while we are asking for these positions, it doesn't mean that, like you said, we have eliminated positions, we have not filled retirement positions. So if we...
Yeah, I don't know where, I just was looking to see where we're at. Because I know we're not at that minus 21 level anymore. I know we've increased people to then.
Sure.
But I just was trying to get a flavor on that. And then to go back to the number, the 76% number that we keep looking at, that the overall personnel costs are a percentage of the, it's the total operating expenditures that you look at when you do that.
Correct, the general fund, yes.
Right. So, yeah, I think it's gone from 72 based on my eyeball in it here to 76. But, and again, my major concerns are the Police Department and the Parks Department, where we have the most number of people that are affected by those types of positions. So I was, after having the explanation from Director Hobson and Chief Burke on those positions, I'm in favor of having those three positions still underlooked.
Yeah, Chief, was you starting, whether an officer on first year?
Depends on, it depends on what they, whether or not they come in with experience.
On a normal sworn-in officer, what average pay?
The second half of the 50s. I don't know the exact...
Sorry?
The second half of the 50s, somewhere between 55 and 60 is starting.
Somewhere between 55 and 60. And then where does that go five years down the road?
I know that after the completion of eight years, they reach top pay, and then they're in the mid 90s.
Sorry?
They're in the mid 90s by the time they hit top pay, which is...
The mid 90s?
The start of their ninth year. I don't know what five years would be without looking at the contract.
Okay. But over eight years, and now you're looking at 90,000?
Completion of eight years, yes.
Okay. So what you're looking at is as far as what you're approving now, you've got to also look at what it's going to be like in seven or eight years, you know. And that's not also including increases that you'll wind up in the bargaining table. That's just an automatic step increases. So, again, you know, that just needs to be weighed into the decisions because when we take and put somebody in, we're not looking at three years from now and saying, oh, you know, costs have gone up, and so now we've got to start laying off people. And we're not looking at that either. So I think to some extent, we need to move slowly. I don't think this is the year to be adding on all those people.
I just had information that Alderman Schaefer asked about with the numbers. And this is out of the budget, this is out of 15, 16 budget. In the general fund in 2007, 2008, we had 132.55 full-time employees, just in the general fund. In all eight, nine, that went to 126.5, nine, 10, 117.5, 10, 11, 112.5, so 20 employees down. 11 and 12, 111. 12, 13, 111. 13, 14, 109. 14, 15, 110. And then the 15, 16 budget had 111.98 in it. We're now at, we're now at 125, but that's skewed because 10 of those are additional dispatchers. So we went from 12.25 to 22.25 dispatchers. So if you take those out, it'd be 115. So it would still be 17 full-time employees down from where we were at in 2007, 2008.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yeah, I'll echo a couple of comments that have already been made. First of all, on the, I'm going to go back to 12. On the adding people versus adding capital or fixing roads, whatever you want to call it, just a point that, and again, it's not a value judgment, you need to be a comment, when you add personnel, that extra money that you're spending, in fact, you never get it back. So what do I mean by that? If I spend, for example, the $364,000 that we're talking about, if I spend that on doing several streets in the city, next year, if you so choose, you can spend it again on doing those streets, different streets. In the following year, you can spend it again, because that revenue stream is still there. Once you add to your personnel costs, it's gone forever. Unless, of course, you have a layoff, so it's gone forever. And in fact, it's almost, it's more than that because with the, as has already been mentioned, with the increases that are happening, that do happen, we're looking at, depending on which number you do, it's somewhere around $450,000, $500,000 increase in personnel costs every year if we do nothing. Because that's just what's going to happen. So this erodes really quickly. And I know, as has been said already, I know when we talked about the tax increase, the 4% sales tax and the 2% telecom tax, I can, again, I can speak for myself, my intention was that that was to allow relief for capital expenditures. We've toured, I know people on public works, toured the garage, we've had very good arguments for some trucks that are probably going to fail. Probably going to fail. And we just talked about these cars that we haven't replaced. So we're spending that money because we won't have it next year. And even though the, we're not getting a full year of the tax increase because of the 10-month, by the time you get to the following year, if you're thinking that that money will then come in, it will not because of that increase in, that increase in personnel costs, it will happen. It's inscapable. It will happen. So what you're facing frankly is, you have to keep increasing taxes. So I mean, it's not necessarily a value judgment on personnel, it is a value judgment on what we're dealing with here. So I know for me personally, there was no thought in my mind, and I do not recall any discussion from other council members or staff about we needed tax increases to add to personnel costs. So that's just from that standpoint. As far as the individual ones that we're talking about here, Anne is correct, she's asked for it. I have the last two years of budget requests prior to this one, so this is the third year in a row. I saw, I know Parks was on there last year, although I think it's a tough argument for Parks, but that's my personal opinion. What the interesting, the interesting thing was that, at least in these two years, and we had positions, so we had seven positions in fiscal year 17, 18, and we talked about, and zero without worrying the budget. We may have added one in a budget amendment later, I'm not sure. We had four positions in fiscal year 18, 19, and one was added, which was a city plant position, which we did not fill, have not filled yet, which there's still intention to do that. In fact, if you look at the, and I believe you may be correct, there were some positions eliminated. Our costs are up by over $200,000. If we had filled the same plant position, our costs would be up by over $300,000. Those are actual, that's actual, from budget to budget. Look at what we were the year before with what we anticipate this year. So right there, you can see that the 300, 360, whatever you want to call it, it's going to go away in a big hurry. It's just going to go away. So then you've got to start asking if you really, you know, and I like one comment, maybe this isn't the year. Maybe you need to look at, reevaluate it. But, you know, I started questioning this on the finance committee because I noticed in overtime situations, so, you know, I noticed that Parks had, in total, and I know this isn't the, it all involves some people work more than others, but there's 2% overtime for the entire department. That's less than an hour a week in a 4-hour, 40-hour schedule. So I began to question, well, why are we, why do we think we need another employee? And then I got Director Hobson's presentation here where there's 30 extra projects that we're doing because we contracted mowing. And I guess I started to wonder, well, if we can do 30 extra projects, why are we asking with the people we have? Why are we asking for another? And then I've said in the committee meeting that, you know, the one that I, just because of my own experiences in the past, that I recognize that an operation the size of the city, having one HR person is a problem. It's a tough nut to crack. Now, I don't know how you feel that, I don't think you need it, I mean, I'm not going to answer that, or can there be some other, you know, movement of resources? I don't know. But I do, I do know that one person handling all the requests, just because I've seen it personally in the private sector, and it's got to be fairly similar, or maybe worse in the public sector. But that's tough. So I said that in the committee meeting, that that one I sort of, I sort of get. And finally, with the Police Department, and I spent, and I do appreciate the time that the chief spent, and Deputy Chief Walsh, we spent probably an hour and a half, I think, last Thursday, talking about various things. I went through, you know, the chief's presentation and support for what he's asking for. But I still can't get away from, I did some analysis on my own, which I know will surprise everybody in the room. But I actually looked at, I took, and I know there's some controversy, I guess, with, I talked to, I talked with the chief, but I took the FBI tables that was referenced in the very first budget. And I went through and looked at them for virtually every year since 2007. But I'll just talk a little bit about 2017 because that's the most recent year it's available. And I, you can break this down 100 different ways. And you can look at every single municipality in the state of Illinois. And you can look at averages for the Midwest, and so forth and so on. And then you can look at individual municipalities, which I did. And so I just talked a little bit. First, just in general, based on those tables, we are in the top third in terms of staffing and sworn officers in the police department. So that means we're higher than two-thirds of all other municipalities our size. We're in the top 12% of the entire state. So that includes Chicago and Rockford and all those there above us in terms of officers per thousand population. So I looked at it. And then specifically, I wanted to just look at the closest communities because I thought that was more appropriate. So Woodstock and Crystal Lake. And when I met with the chief, I became aware that Woodstock and Crystal Lake, that apparently recently added, or within the last couple of years, had added some officers. But so I changed what I was looking at, and I actually added in the numbers that we got that day. And the reality is, we are still well above Woodstock, and we're still above Crystal Lake in terms of, if you're looking at an officer per population, if you look at it on officer per mile, we're still above those communities. So just... So just for interest's sake, and I was just kind of, I thought, well, there's one other town that I know something about, and it happens to be a town in Minnesota that I happen to have. My son-in-law is actually a police officer, but he's a detective up there. So I thought, this didn't come from him. But I thought, well, I'll look at that town because they're about our size. And so they're very similar, they're a little bit lower population, about 25,000. They have twice as many crime offenses as we do, least reported, least reported. And they have sworn officers, they have sworn officers, and they have a 34, which means their rate is way below where we are in terms of. And by the way, that checks with what I do know that they have. So the FBI table is correct. And if I use their rate, they would say we need 37. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right. So then I looked at, and this may not be a proper way to look at it, I'm not sure. I thought, well, since I have the crime statistics there, I'll look at offenses. And this may not be right because a patrol officer doesn't necessarily investigate. You know, they're just, they're on the street. But I thought, well, I'll look at that. And it was interesting because offenses per sworn officer in City McHenry, City of Crystal Lake, and the Village of Woodstock are all about the same, all about nine and a half to 10. So that means, at least from a crime standpoint, it means we're fairly equivalent, which I don't think would surprise anybody. So then I looked at my son-in-law's community, and remember I said nine and a half to 10? They're 20.3. So I just questioned, I think where we are right now, based on those statistics, is probably a pretty good number. And I know that doesn't get the police department the way they want. And I look in the chief's tables, which the formula that is used, and I'm not arguing with him. It's probably pretty accurate as far as suing the information that goes into it is right. So I'm not going to argue with that, but that's the full demand, and perhaps that's not where we can be. So anyway, I spent a lot of time just looking at, because one thing, I get curious about things, and so that's kind of what I get into it. And yeah, it does take a fair amount of time, not as much as you might imagine. Once you kind of get into the tables, it usually takes the most time just trying to get into it. But at any rate, and I'd be quite happy to share that with anybody that wants to share. And, you know, I've got the lists of municipalities in Illinois. The data's there. And I know the chief must respond to this.
He does.
We've had a conversation about the FBI tables, but I did verify, at least with our three closest communities and the one in Minnesota, that other than recent additions, pretty darn happy, one least reported.
Could I have a minute?
Thank you.
So Alden McCurry and I, we did have a very healthy debate and discussion last Thursday on the analysis that the police department put forward. And I thank him for his time, for letting me point out my points. We did get stuck on this FBI report. And although we did, I did put this in the report on purpose to show you that there are different municipalities that will use that as a guideline because we're not willing to take the time to look at really what the needs of an individual community are. So what the FBI reporting does is, the first thing it does is it tells you what the current status is of other agencies, not what their needs are, because it makes an assumption that they've met their needs, that they've got their 49 officers and they're happy. And that's not the case. What you're seeing is everybody's trying to rebound from either positions they lost during the recession or overall growth. So what we did was we took the time to actually look at what the current best way is for determining allocation of manpower. The other thing that the FBI report does not do is it does not say that McHenry City has 15.4 square miles to cover, and the Village of Algonquin only has 12.43, which is, you know, a 21% increase of geographical area that we're responsible for providing public safety. And that we have 11% larger, greater area than Woodstock, that we have to provide that public safety. We're 42% bigger than Lake and the Hills, that we have to provide that public safety for. This all comes around response times. At the end of the day, we have to determine what's the minimum amount of police cars that we need driving around our town, our 15.4 square miles, at any given time. Four, because that's what we have on most shifts, and on our heavy shifts, we have five. And that's all determining for how fast can we get somewhere without driving irresponsibly or causing a wreck to provide the level of service that our community demands from us. And that's where this comes into play. So once we've determined what our allocation levels are, then we can see that. But what that FBI report doesn't show is it doesn't show the square miles. It doesn't show that McHenry handled 27,000 calls for service last year, Algonquin handled 16,000, or Woodstock handled only 20,000. These are all the things that we looked at in the report. We looked at them for ourselves individually. We don't compare ourselves to another standard because that's not how the industry does it. You know, I have some publications here from the U.S. Department of Justice that talks about the proper way for taking the time to dive into manpower allocation and staffing analysis for police departments, I'd be more than happy to share them. But I think my report covers it in a pretty detailed manner, that we looked at the areas, we looked at our complexity of our calls for service, and we looked at all the other steps that take our officers, even when they're working, away from their ability to be available for the next emergency. And that's that gradual balance we have to manage. You know, we put overtime in there, because Alden and Curry talked about that, and we're pulling our overtime out of the water. And we're still trying to make decisions to run short as it is at certain staffing moments. And we're walking that fine line. And every year it gets harder because every year people get more benefit time to burn, and we have to provide them that time off too. We talked a little bit earlier, the 20 positions that the city lost since 2007, 10 of those came from the police department alone. So, you know, we were at a different staffing level, and we made our changes. We don't have as many records clerks, and we don't have as many CSOs, and we don't have as many dispatchers as we did when we had that model of the dispatch center. We've adapted and done everything we can, but when it comes to the workload and the complexity of the police calls that have changed, like you see in that report, we're at our max. We're really struggling to actually fill the shifts on the road without, it's not just about creating overtime. It's different for a police department on how we create overtime. If we run a factory and we run three shifts, and we cut a shift because we know exactly how many widgets we can make on a shift with how many personnel, that's not how police work works. We have to have officers that are available, patrolling your neighborhoods, available to answer our calls in moments notice. You know, and then we also have to make sure that we can put up a squad car down your street at least a couple of times a week, right, to do active patrols. But if we drop our staffing levels, we don't meet that need. You know, I used the analogy with Alden McCurry in our meeting is, you live on the far west side of town, and if I don't have an area car out there, and there's a home invasion, and somebody's shot, is five minutes' response time sufficient for the city of McHenry? It's not. You know, we're supposed to get there before the ambulance. They're not going to go in until the police gets there on a violent crime. They're going to stage down the street. And if we can't provide that, if we get stuck because we're stacking calls and our officers are stuck on other calls, we have to look at that. So when we looked at it, of course, we looked a little bit, and of course, we had to look at our neighboring communities, but they're not our comparables. And the industry standards are showing us, don't look at your neighbors. They're not you. They don't have your community expectations. You know, we've developed a strong sense of community policing in McHenry. We've done that over a period of, a long period of time. I think Alden McGlaughlin has been here one of the longest. He can see what the McHenry Police Department was about in the 90s compared to how it is now. It's dramatically different. You know, if we were to go back and do policing from the 90s, we were not a community-oriented police department. Doesn't matter what our mission said, we were not. We are now. We have a public affairs officer, we get out in the public, we inspect car seats, we do all sorts of other responsibilities on top of responding to emergencies and handling specific calls for service, car crashes. This is a demand that's expected of us, of our community. And we need to be able to meet those needs as well. So I think the report is fairly detailed. And once we can accomplish that, if we can agree as a council that we need to have four police officers driving around on nights and five police officers on days and afternoons, then it's literally a simple mathematical formula. I can't, the benefit time and the time off and the training, these are all requirements by us. So I can't change those. Then I can do the simple math, and then it's guaranteed. It's the 2.07 officers per one of those 17 shifts in patrol, and that's where I get those numbers from. And so again, I hope that council can see that the demand is there for the police positions. And that, for clarification, we have asked for these positions every year for numerous years now, going back at least four years, even when I was the deputy chief. The part of the vetting process internally with the city is that if there is absolutely no funding mechanism for even you to consider, the city administrator prioritizes it, and he filters it. And so please don't think that this is the first time that we've come forward and we've asked for the replacement of these positions because it's not. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Alden McCannan?
Thanks for that explanation, Chief. You know, it's hard to deny the police department because life's safety, right? I appreciate all your diligent work too. I know you enjoy doing that, but I appreciate that you provided to us as well. And that's why I'm saying that, you know, if we can do one this year, maybe consider one the following year, at least. I want to make sure that there's police officers there. And while I wasn't on the council at the time, in the 90s, you are absolutely right, it was not community-oriented, and I think the demeanor of the officers was much different. I actually had my home burglarized, and it was, I felt like I was being accused, and I had just lost a lot. So it was, you know, totally different demeanor.
If I could add to that, just for clarification too, is there's a training process for our police officers? So although we're asking for this, for our staffing needs for this next fiscal year, it takes 10 months to train a police officer through the hiring process. So even if the city council approved these positions, they won't count as staffing levels for us till probably March of 2020. So if we were to put these positions off for an additional year, you're actually putting them off for two years. So just for clarification.
The other thing I do want to talk about, because I think it's easy to dismiss human resources because Anne does a great job. But there's a whole lot more that goes into that. And we don't hear much about her, or I would say department, but it's not a department, it's just her. Because of all the collective bargaining, we've been lucky. We've had some good results, you know, you're a big part of that. But the other thing is just handling, so if we're at about, let's say, 115 employees, they also can go to her with complaints and dealing with special needs. And there's a lot more that goes into human resources than just her sitting there, you know? I mean, I think we forget sometimes that that's an integral part of running an organization this large. That said, you know, and I would love to say, oh, well, maybe you could do, you know, with someone part-time. I just, I question whether or not we would get a qualified person at part-time. So.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, I mean, that was my thought. So again, you know, I know Alden McGlaughlin said several times, you know, well, let's just think about it, but we've been thinking about it, and sometime we've got it just by the bullet.
Thank you. Alden McGlaughlin?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said before, as far as when you look at those percentages, and I'm not saying that there isn't any director here. I guess you wouldn't really be doing your job if you weren't looking for more help. I don't care which director it is. Problem winds up more than anything else is the fact that our community can afford so much without increasing taxes again. And we've raised the sales tax, and again, if you look at an officer that you start out at X amount and is making 30% to 40% more down in seven or eight years, well, that's 30% or 40% more than it's the revenue. And are we going to be looking at increasing property taxes? I mean, again, I think we all took kind of a little bit of pride over the years keeping that jettisoned flat, trying to at least do our part to try to keep those property taxes in line. And I don't see us going and jumping too much higher on sales tax in the next couple of years. And that's the only other revenue that we're going to be looking at as far as major that we can control to, you know, if we wind up with, let's say, a reduction in sales tax or whatever. We're going to be looking for other revenue streams, so that's going to be the only thing that we'd be looking at. The decisions we make today could affect that within the next two or three years. And I think that's what we need to look at. Like I said, it doesn't mean I don't want to look at this next year, but I don't think this is the time that we need to look at this. I think there's too many variables to just start with that many help.
All right, so I'd like to provide staff with some direction by the council. And I'd like to ask for consensus by position and see where we're at at that point. So in favor, maybe just raise your hand. You're in favor of? Got that?
Okay, so, I mean, the one point I stressed, I know I. Three hours ago. Is we're looking at four or zero, that's in front of us tonight.
No.
He's asking us individually right now.
Go ahead.
Good. Continue. In favor of two police officers? Raise your hand if you're in favor of the two police officers. Parks, maintenance worker. HR coordinator. Okay. That's all we need. All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, staff reports. Any staff reports this evening?
I think that I sent out an email just that Officer Pop is going to be retiring as Canine Duke, effective May 1st, and we're looking forward to bringing him up here in front of the city council, recognizing for his eight years of service to the City of McHenry. I'm not sure we'll be able to bring Duke into the room. He's a little aggressive at times. We'll have to talk to Officer Pop, who doesn't really like us. Police department, we normally make him keep him in his car, but I would like to bring him here so council could see him. He gets to retire at the top of his game. We were looking to retire him this year, so hopefully he'll have a decent amount of retirement to spend with the Pop family and his children with good health.
I think you introduced us to Duke, those of us that were here when he first started. And he was, he was a crazy dad.
One of the most aggressive canine dogs that the Midwest has ever seen, other than Officer Pop's identical twin brother, who's a canine handler in Indiana. He might have the other most aggressive.
So maybe.
Very much is so, the dog is trained to the handler's perspective. Our next dog. What, pardon me?
It's still with his family, though.
It will stay with his family, yes. He's like a big baby with family. That's the only four people that that dog is.
Like a little kid.
Will there be a replacement then?
Our goal is to, if the capital program, I think we do have a couple bucks in the TDP for next year to replace, the classes are staggered, so we probably won't come back to the council till the fall before we can secure a canine class. That's the next one.
I think it's a good asset.
It absolutely is, yes. And the next one, we have other aspirations for, other things that we're going to do for the City of McHenry.
Thank you, Chief. Any other staff reports? No?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to the chief about accolades to your officers that do become owners, well, pretty much the owner of the police dogs, and just the fact that it's really something that their family have to. In a way, it is a little bit of a sacrifice at first, until they can use this dog and everything else.
Absolutely.
It's a big undertaking for that family.
10 years, yeah. He was a canine handler for 10 years. He went through two dogs in two years, and then finally got Duke. And he had Duke for eight years, so. It is a match with not just the family, but with the handlers as well. Thank you.
Just on that same thing, so it would be a new officer probably then, right?
Yes, yeah, so it'll be open for applications, and the officers will be able to put in for that specialty assignment.
Next item on my agenda is mayor and city council comments. Is there any other city council comments? I'd just like to say, you know, congratulations to Alden and Andy McGlaughlin, you know, and also Bobby Banny and Sue Miller. I mean, that was a tough race over there for you guys. You know, welcome to the city council here in the next couple of weeks. you know, welcome to the city council here in the next couple of weeks, and it's gonna be exciting what we can do in the following year, so. Oh, and Paddock, yeah, that was close, sorry.
You have a tough race, too.
That was really close. But you know, I also appreciate Alderman Cannon's services, and also Alderman Curry's services to the City of McHenry, so obviously this isn't your last meeting, but I just wanted to say a few things there, so. At this time, motion to adjourn the meeting. Alderman Cannon?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Alderman Curry. Court, please call them.
Alderman Cannon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Havick?
Yes.
Alderman Shaper?
Yes.
Alderman Glass?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes. Thank you.